Meeting will come to order, please rise for the players of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which has changed one nation under God into the full with liberty and justice for all. Roll call please. Councilmember Erby here. Councilmember Page. Councilmember Wassinger.
Here.
Councilmember Gray. Councilmember Dolan.
Here.
Councilmember Trachis.
Present.
Councilmember Harder.
Here.
Madam Vice Chair, we have a forum.
I move for the approval of the Journal of the meeting of May 16, 2017.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The May 16, 2017 Journal is approved. I move to suspend the rules in order for the presentation of a proclamation. Uh... Wait a minute.
The county executive is approving.
Well, Councilwoman Wassinger is going to present it since she knows the person very well. I'm sorry. To recognize the centennial anniversary, 100 years of the American Red Cross. That's a motion, I'm sorry. Second. I've got to stop there. A motion to suspend the rules, I need a second.
She did.
Did you second me? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, the rules are suspended.
If I may, Madam Chair, read the proclamation. Whereas for 100 years, the American Red Cross has given help and hope to St. Louis area families during their darkest hours, supporting our neighbors after fires, floods, and tornadoes. And whereas just last winter, 498 Red Cross volunteers assisted 2,828 families who lost their homes and possessions in the floodwaters. And during that crisis, they served nearly 60,000 meals and snacks and provided more than 700 shelter stays. And whereas the Red Cross blood program provides more than 85 percent of our region's blood supply. And whereas for 100 years, the Red Cross has supported our local military members, veterans, and their families, and provided comfort and care in military and veterans hospitals, and continues to support military families with vital social services, and provides emergency communications to keep families connected when they most need it. And whereas during their centennial year, the American Red Cross is focusing attention on the great work they do in disaster response, blood services, military support, health and safety training, and international disaster relief. Is there a representative from the Red Cross here?
Ms. Erickson.
Is she here? I don't see her. Okay. We'll just hold it then until they...
Okay. All right. Thanks.
Do you have no bid open? This evening will move to communications.
Madam Vice Chair, there are no tax compromises this evening, so I'll move to zoning matters. Under zoning matters, item number 1, 5th District.
Receive, file, and county council will be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered.
Madam Vice Chair, we have nothing under road and bridge maps this evening, so I'll move to other communications. Under other communications, item number 1, 3rd District. Receive and file.
So ordered.
Item number 2, 7th District.
Receive and file.
So ordered.
Item number 3.
Receive, file, and the county council will be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation, and that will be the order.
Item number 4, 3rd District. Receive, file, and the county council will be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered.
Item number 5.
Receive, file, and the county council will be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation. Same motion for item number 6, and that will be the order.
Item number 7.
Receive, file, and refer to the county council for review and response, and that will be the order. Please read the add-on to the hand.
Item number 1.
Um... Wait a minute, I'm sorry, I have it somewhere. I don't have the red line, too, so what was supposed to be? It's not what I need. Bye. I'm receiving file, and that will be the order. Item number 2, 7th District.
I receive and file.
So ordered. Thank you, thank you. Okay. We have no reports on special committee, so we'll move to the public forum.
We have seven speakers this evening, Madam Vice Chair.
We have seven speakers from your call. Please come forward, state your name and address for the record. You'll have three minutes, and Jen will let you know when it's time to wrap up your comments.
First speaker this evening is Lynn Labob.
Hi, my name is Lynn Labob, and I have questions about the St. Louis County Planning Commission's On page number 3 of the St. Louis County planning report, it states McManus Company has a fleet of 20 trucks. However, this does not mention what kind of trucks. I do have a picture of tractor trailers at the current snowpro location at Coubert Avenue, which is clearly a tractor trailer. And additionally, if you drive by their other storage yard in Highway 55 and glance into the Green Park industrial area, you will see at least a half dozen tractor trailers. And here's my picture. Does the fleet of 20 trucks include tractor trailers? Because on the report, it's not specifying that, and I disagree with the fact that you're selling chemicals, salt chemicals, that you would only be open from 7 until 5:00 p.m. That's also incorrect. And I also, in reading this, it says no materials or fuel to be stored on that site. I don't believe that to be true either. My concern is actually the safety of our citizens and the great danger, because that is a very busy, dangerous, blind curve for that kind of business, with tractor trailers and trucks coming in and out of all hours of the day and night, especially in bad weather. I also had very close friends that were killed at that blind curve, so I actually... There's a reason for zoning, and I'm hoping that at some point, we get some men and women in business, as well as in this government, local and national, that are honesty and integrity. I think we need to start looking to be better stewards of our country and our nation and our streets. Again, I had friends that were killed there. That's a very dangerous area for that kind of business. That's why I think it's really important to find out, well gee, what is it zoned? Do not just buy these properties. That's how I buy property. I've bought and sold lots of property. So I don't think we're getting the truth. I plan on contacting the planning, zoning, and MoDOT regarding my concerns to find out if they have more specifics about the intended use for this property.
That's three minutes, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker is Eric Aholt.
Hi, my name is Eric Aholt. I live in Valley Park, and I'm a member of the Operating Engineers Local 513. On behalf of the Operating Engineers, we want to encourage the county council to pass bill number 130, the legislation needed to replace the dangerously deteriorated Allen and Lewis Road bridges. We have heard a lot of talk about these bridges. There is one fact that cannot be denied, these structures are unsafe. Engineers, who are experts on the integrity of bridges, and public servants, whose only agenda is making sure that roads, bridges, and other structures are safe, have rated the Lewis Road Bridge at a 2 on a scale of 100, and the Allen Road Bridge at a scale at a 17 on that scale. First responders have also determined that the Lewis Road Bridge is no longer safe enough to cross with emergency vehicles. Not to mention the fact that the bridge passes over a busy set of railroad tracks and trains that sometimes carry hazardous materials are on those tracks. We neglect infrastructure like this at our own peril. We ask the council to approve funding for these bridges. And when you do, the union members of the construction trades with their high level of production and quality are ready to build the new bridges safely to serve our community for decades to come. Thank you.
Next speaker is Cameron Hartman.
My name is Cameron Hartman, and I'm representing Hartman Tax Service, 803 LeMay Ferry Road. Last time I was here was two weeks ago, and I was standing in support of my friends and fellow business owners, the McManus family of McManus Construction. And I would have actually been here last week, but I was attending my wife's graduation from nursing school, so I just wanted to go ahead and touch on three points really briefly. Number one, I want to make sure that you understand that I'm standing firmly with the McManus family tonight with the same resolve that I did two weeks ago. I personally believe that they've met every rule, every law, and every regulation that was set forth by the county for them to occupy the Teetime property. Until the laws are changed currently, the council should be allowing businesses to operate under the predictability of the current law without impedience, whether retaining businesses or adding businesses. Our community is frustrated, and all we're seeing currently is foot dragging by the council that we've entrusted to set these laws while our businesses die. Hartman Tax Service is a micro-business. It puts back through a program that we have in partnership with the St. Louis County Police Family Association called the Hats and Gloves Program. Basically, our goal is to put a set of hats and gloves in the back of every patrol car so that the officers have those to hand out as they run into people out on the road while they're doing their patrol. It's a great program for a micro-business. The McManus family puts back 50 times that amount into the community. We are out there, and we're supporting our community, and we're expecting that the county should be doing everything they can to support us. All it takes in this case is the county council administering the current law. Instead, we've got 150 vacant commercial properties in LeMay Township, and that number is growing. Our community is frustrated, and all we're seeing currently is dragging of feet by the county council that we've entrusted while our businesses are out there dying. My final point is that the county is full of people that are taking a last stand for renaissance. If politics get in the way of retaining our core businesses and rebuilding our commercial losses, the community is going to end up sliding down the irreversible slippery slope of community decline. As a tax professional, I'm seeing it happen before my very eyes in the way that people are doing businesses. Family businesses, like McManus Construction, Hartman Tax Service, that operate within legal compliance and encourage and mentor others to operate with full integrity and compliance, will end up leaving and seeking opportunity elsewhere, and the county is going to be left herding cats of the shadow and the gig economies, which are the locus of commerce when no brick and mortar exists. Our community is frustrated, and all we're seeing is foot dragging by the county council that we've entrusted while our businesses are dying. So I definitely encourage you to, you know, make this thing move along, make sure that we're retaining the best businesses that we have to offer and build on that. Thank you very much.
Next speaker is Brian R. Coff.
Hello, my name is Brian Coff. I live at 2828 Innsburg, St. Louis, Missouri, District 6. I'm here to talk on behalf of Rob McManus also. A couple weeks ago, he got up here, and he said he was overcome by a motion from the outpouring of people speaking on his behalf. His friends from church, his business contacts, people he's worked for, people in his neighborhood, people in the neighborhood he wants to build his business in. And what did he do? He got up here, he turned around, and he gave all that credit to his employees and his family. That is a great example of leadership, and that's the kind of leadership we need in District 6, you know, for businesses and in general. And that's how I know him. He's a leader with the King and Baptist Disaster Relief Chainsaw Team. We go out and we clean up lots after tornadoes and ice storms. We cut the trees down that fall on the houses. We cut the trees down that fall on people's driveways. Well, Rob McManus, he donates his own equipment, specialized equipment for this task. They can pick up trees at a rapid pace and discard them, which always makes us the most capable team in a disaster zone. And he's the only one that does that. And that's why I think that leaders like him should be welcome in Oakville in District 6. And I encourage you all to vote for him and his business, because he's the kind of leader I want to follow, and he's the kind of leader we need in Oakville. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Jennifer Byrd.
I live at 9244 Laurel Hill Drive in Crestwood. Thank you for taking my comments. Where to start? I'm extremely disappointed that the time change of this meeting from 6:00 to 6:30 did not pass last week. I'm dismayed and disappointed. Had the meeting been a 6:30 meeting last week, I would have actually been able to attend. And I think, I've talked about this for so many years, I don't even know how many different ways I can say. It's very difficult to work a full day and return home and take care of a family and feed them, or at least get everything activated and homework started and practice in clarinet or whatever else that has to be done, and then rush into Clayton. For me, it's a little bit of a drive, because I'm in South County. I can't imagine living in Hazelwood, for example, and trying to beat the clock to be here prior to 6:00 to sign in to speak. So I'm just very dismayed, and I truly hope there's an excellent rationale that was considered for... Maybe you wanted to make it 7:00. I don't know. I'm hopeful that there's a reason, and before I get too thoroughly angry, I'm going to try to keep a lid on it and just say, I hope you reconsider that issue, because to me, the message is, we don't want to hear from you. We don't care what you think, and we're not interested in your concerns for the county. And I'm just... I'm dismayed. So I would like for you to revisit that and give us some consideration so that we have an opportunity to come in and speak. And then shifting gears, we all know city-county merger is upon us. It is happening. Maybe we're not privy to the plan, but believe me, there is a movement towards that, and I think that that's... You can't call me a conspiracy theorist about that anymore when I was growing around in 2011, warning people about such an event, because Rex Singfield isn't going to spend that kind of money on a study to compare county departments with city departments and then do nothing with the information. Information is king, and that's... Data sales are big these days. So, and I'm interested in Lita Cruisen's comments that she's talking about, we need to get re-engaged. I don't think so. She did mention something about a prenup. That's fascinating. So I would like to say, in a prenup, city's on the hook for its debt, city's also on the hook for its current obligations, whenever that timeframe makes it current is current, and clean up your fiscal house. Eliminate your waste and your bloat, and then maybe we can talk about something. But not until then. Until then, it remains a bailout, and it remains a reward, and it remains saving an entity that's got 60-plus years of failed policies, so no merger. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Renee Artman.
Hi, my name is Renee Artman, and I live at 1530 Winter Chase in Fenton. I am here for questions. How many libraries do we need in St. Louis County? I just found out, and it's my fault, that Marshall's Nursery, who has been there for 35-plus years, has been bought out by the county. The man didn't want to sell. I talked to him personally, and now we're having another library there? I hope the library is built better than the one across the street from Grant's Farm, because it's the ugliest building I've ever seen. I talked to my daughter, who is a college professor. I said, Deborah, how many people on your students go to the public libraries? First of all, they don't have to, because the universities have their own, and everything is done on the internet. So I don't know why we need another library when we have the one at Grant's Trail and we have Grand Glaze. Libraries are starting to become archaic, because we're doing everything online. I just want to question, why do we have to have another library? And why did, when you guys approached Terry for his property, why did you tell him, we're going to get this property one way or the other? I want answers. Do you guys ever answer questions? I want answers.
I can answer that.
Good, thank you.
You didn't have anything to do with the library.
That's right. Library for... But it was voted on by county council. That's what I was told, and if not, I apologize. But I don't think we need another darn library. So, in switching that, I urge you to reconsider the time change. It is tough to get here. At quarter to 6:00, we all work. Mark, you know, I've asked you for a year to get it changed.
I tried.
If you don't want us to speak, which I heard some man in the back say, how many speakers are there tonight? And they said, 7. And he said, that's 7 too many. You know, this is our... It's my county, it's your county, we're in this together, let's work together. That's all I've got to say.
You didn't... You did not hear us say that it was 7.
No, it was a gentleman.
Yeah. We've been here on nights where we've had 200-plus speakers.
I know you put in a lot of work, but at the same time, you need to give your constituents that, you know, a little bit of time, because we're all working people to get here. We have to go through traffic. I had to make special arrangements to get here this early.
And do you know that there are people who, when we changed it to 6:00? I remember when Councilman O'Meara changed it to 6:00 when he was chair. There are people who were happy about that, who want to come straight from work instead of going home and then coming back. So anytime you change, we're probably going to have people who are not happy with us.
You can't please everybody. I think that.
Right.
But 6:30 would be a lot better.
Final speaker this evening is Greg Brown.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm Greg Brown, Chief of the Eureka Fire Protection District. I have two issues I'd like to address to you tonight. The one I spoke several weeks ago about the bridges up in the Crescent area on Allen Road and Lewis Road. Again, those bridges, something has to be done. We're very concerned about public safety and trying to get across those bridges in the event of an emergency, and the weight of our fire trucks potentially doing more damage to already crumbling bridges. So I would implore you to continue to work on this project and get it moving forward before something really bad would happen up in that area. Again, they do cross over the railroad tracks, and just three or four years ago, I stood on the Lewis Road Bridge when there was a train that had been derailed, that it was carrying grain that particular day. And again, it's an issue of public safety, access to the folks who live there, and the people who come to that area in large numbers to participate in some of the activities in those areas with golf courses and the riding stables. So I would ask that you continue to move that project forward. It's very important. The other thing I wanted to do was compliment the Office of Emergency Management, which is part of the police department in St. Louis County, for their work with us in the recent flooding. They did an outstanding job. They always do an outstanding job working with us when there's an emergency and pre-planning and training. But in this particular event with the recent Merrimack River flooding, they were there night and day, working hard, showing the best of what the county has to offer to its citizens to support us out in the field as we were trying to handle that situation. So again, an outstanding job done by your Office of Emergency Management. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Some more speakers, Madam Vice Chair. Okay, that will conclude the public forum. Introduction of Bill. Bill number 131, introduced by Councilmember Erby for Councilmember Page and ordinance authorizing the county executive to accept three periodic grants of up to $300,000 from the Missouri Family Health Council Incorporated appropriating up to $300,000 received during the initial grant period for comprehensive Title 10 family planning services and authorizing the county executive to execute necessary documents. Bill number 132, introduced by Councilmember Erby for Councilmember Page and ordinance authorizing the county executive to accept a grant of up to $9,870 from the Missouri Department of Health and Senior Services appropriating same for support of the violent death and enhanced opioid surveillance program and authorizing execution of related documents. Bill number 133, introduced by Councilmember Erby for Councilmember Page and ordinance authorizing the county executive to accept a donation of up to $3,600 from St. Martha's Hall for support of the Family Courts Domestic Violence Fund appropriating the donation for support of said fund. Bill number 134, introduced by Councilmember Erby for Councilmember Page and ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute a contract with Lebon LLC doing business as quest diagnostics, laboratory testing, and cytology services for clients of the county health centers and the Justice Center. Bill number 135, introduced by Councilmember Erby and ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute a contract with Project Backboard for refurbishing three basketball courts in Kinlock Park. Bill number 136, introduced by Councilmember Erby for Councilmember Page and ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute contracts with six grantees for projects related to waste reduction and education concerning same. Bill number 137, introduced by Councilmember Erby for Councilmember Page and ordinance authorizing Director of Revenue as trustee to grant and easement to Level 3 Communications LLC on, over, and under a portion of land acquired at the August 2009 tax sale for installation of a telecommunications fiber optic conduit and cable. Bill number 138, introduced by Councilmember Harder and ordinance providing for the vacation of a portion of excess right-of-way of Spirit of St. Louis Boulevard petitioners Gordon A. Gundaker Jr. and Duke Realty Limited Partnership. Bill number 139, introduced by Councilmember Erby for Councilmember Page and ordinance amending Title 2, Chapter 204, St. Louis County Revise Orange since 1974 as amended the retirement plans by repealing and reenacting Sections 204 dash... Or 204.020, 204.100, 204.110, 204.115, 204.120, 204.140, 204.152, 204.155, 204.160, 204.170, 204.180, 204.185, 204.190, 204.255, 204.270, and 204.290 by adding two new sections to be known as 204.012 and 204.061, and by repealing Sections 204.070, 204.080, and 204.460, all pertaining to various components of the retirement plan. Madam Vice Chair, that is all the bills. Thank you. Who makes up a bill? Bill number 121, introduced by Councilmember Trachis.
Please hold Bill number 121, and by agreement, the committee to hold to be rescheduled.
Bill number 121 is held. Bill number 122, introduced by Councilmember Erby for Councilmember Page. I move for perfection of Bill number 122.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, Bill number 122 is perfected. Bill number 123, introduced by Councilmember Erby for Councilmember Page. I move for perfection of Bill number 123.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, Bill number 123 is perfected. Bill number 124, introduced by Councilmember Trachis.
Move to perfect Bill 124.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, Bill number 124 is perfected. Bill number 125, introduced by Councilmember Trachis.
Move to perfect Bill 125.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, Bill number 125 is perfected. Bill number 126, introduced by Councilmember Wassinger. I move to perfect Bill number 126.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Bill number one twenty-six is perfected. Bill number one twenty-seven introduced by Councilmember Erby for Councilmember Page. I move for perfection of Bill number one twenty-seven.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Bill number one twenty-seven is perfected. Bill number one twenty-eight introduced by Councilmember Walton Gray.
I move to perfect Bill number one twenty-eight.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Bill number one twenty-eight is perfected. Bill number one twenty-nine introduced by Councilmember Wassinger. I move to perfect Bill number one twenty-nine.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Bill number one twenty-nine is perfected. Bill number one thirty introduced by Councilmember Harder.
I move to hold this bill.
Second. Uh, Bill number one thirty is held. Final passage of bills. Bill number one sixteen introduced by Councilmember Dolan.
Please hold Bill number one sixteen.
Bill number one sixteen is held. Substitute Bill number one for Bill number one fourteen introduced by Councilmember Harder.
I move for final passage of substitute Bill one for Bill number one fourteen.
Second. Roll call. Councilmember Erby?
Aye.
Councilmember Page? Councilmember Wassinger?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray? Councilmember Dolan?
Aye.
Councilmember Trachis?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Madam Vice Chair, substitute Bill number one for Bill number one fourteen. There are five ayes and two absent. Substitute Bill number one for Bill number one fourteen is finally passed. Bill number one eighteen introduced by Councilmember Page for Councilmember Walton Gray.
Move for final pass to Bill number one eighteen.
Second. Roll call. Councilmember Erby?
Aye.
Councilmember Page? Councilmember Wassinger?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray? Councilmember Dolan?
Aye.
Councilmember Trachis?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Madam Vice Chair, Bill number one eighteen, there are five ayes and two absent. Bill number one eighteen is finally passed. Bill number one nineteen introduced by Councilmember Harder?
I move for final passage of Bill number one nineteen.
Second. Roll call. Councilmember Erby?
Aye.
Councilmember Page? Councilmember Wassinger?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray? Councilmember Dolan?
Aye.
Councilmember Trachis?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Madam Vice Chair, Bill number one nineteen, there are five ayes and two absent. Bill number one nineteen is finally passed. Bill number one twenty introduced by Councilmember Harder?
I move for final passage of Bill number one twenty.
Second. Roll call. Councilmember Erby?
Aye.
Councilmember Page? Councilmember Wassinger?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray? Councilmember Dolan?
Aye.
Councilmember Trachis?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Madam Vice Chair, Bill number one twenty, there are five ayes and two absent. Bill number one twenty is finally passed. We have nothing under resolutions this evening, Madam Vice Chair, so move to unfinished business. Under unfinished business, item number one. Hold on the order of business and that, uh, same motion, item number five and that will be the order. And moving on to new business, Madam Vice Chair, we have two prepared orders this evening.
I move for adoptions of orders. One and, uh, two, order one is for change in the meeting, correct?
Yes.
Um, did you want to announce or?
You, you go ahead.
Um, um, the council meeting will be, the next council meeting will be June sixth at six P.M., Tuesday, June sixth at six P.M. So there will not be a meeting next week.
Could you make a comment?
I move for the motion, yes. One and two.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Orders number one and two are adopted.
Madam Chairman, Chairwoman, uh, motion to adjourn.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Meeting is adjourned.